Hearing no objection, the motion carries unanimously of those members present. So, we're gonna go, because I don't... Sir, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order. So, we're gonna go to item five. This is the grant application for surrendered and abandoned vessel exchange. Sir, you're out of order. You're out of order, sir. So ladies and gentlemen, we are happy to hear your comments as we take up this item. But I'd like to ask if you can let us please address a few items that should not take that much time. And if we could please, ladies and gentlemen, have order. Would you like us to discuss the RV item or not? Would you like us to discuss the RV item or not? If by disrupting the proceedings, you're making it difficult for us to be able to proceed to discuss the item. I am asking that you come to order. I am asking that you please come to order. I'm asking that you please come to order. Will you let the council proceed with our meeting? Please come to order.
It's not really rocket science.
So, I will put the question to the city council. Let us proceed with our meeting.
He's gonna put the question to the city council to ask if we can put 21 first.
The council decide whether we should proceed to the RV item first. So please sit down, let us continue with our meeting. Will the council members please join me back on the dais? Will the council members... You're out of order, sir. Please let us proceed with the meeting. No, I'm not. You're out of order. Please, council members, please join us on the dais. So, I am asking the council, would you like to proceed to item, to, I guess, item 21, the RV item?
Yes.
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 What would the council like to do? How the council... I'm putting the question to the city council. Council member Harrison?
Yeah, I'd like to hear item five, which is on the boats, which is related. Item 10, which should be very fast, about the Fourth of July, and then this.
Council member Han?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable way to go. We have a lot of people here who are here for other items. And we need to be respectful of everyone who's here. And we need to proceed with the meeting so that we can hear all the items.
Vice Mayor Wengrap?
I'd like to ask everybody to try to be civil so that we can proceed with the meeting. We have a lot of... We have... Steve?
Out of order.
You're just delaying, you're just delaying the decision. We can't carry on our business if you behave this way. Why can't council member Harrison?
Sir, please, please do not disrupt the proceedings of the city council.
I agree with council...
Vice Mayor Wengrap?
I agree with the order that council member Harrison suggested.
Lee is the ninth speaker, and the woman behind him is the tenth speaker. After her, the allotted time is one minute under the Berkeley City Council Rules of Procedure and Order, which says that if there are 10 or more speakers, the amount of time is one minute. So, starting with the gentleman. Ma'am, you're out of order, please. You're out of order, ma'am. You're out of order. So, just to clarify, after this woman with the sign, it's one minute. Mr. Lee, would everyone like us, would everyone like... Ma'am, could you please not interrupt the meeting? Please not interrupt. So, would everyone like me to read the item? I'll read the item. So, councilor Han's gonna read the item.
Thank you. I'd like to make sure everyone can hear this. Okay, thank you. So, I'm just gonna read the submission that you have before you. I will read it when it's quiet, because I really want everyone to have the opportunity to hear what's on it. So, this would be an addition to the existing item, which is to do the second reading. This would be in addition, this action would be taken, we are proposing that this action would be taken simultaneously. So, the recommendation reads, "The city of Berkeley seeks to implement all laws and ordinances in a fair and humane manner. To that end, we refer to the city manager for consideration the following guidelines to help ensure enforcement of revised RV parking restrictions allowed under the ordinance is conducted with outreach, including information and resource guides and written notice. Further, we refer to the city manager to quickly establish a three-month permit program with possibility for renewal to be offered on a one-time basis to existing priority populations. And we refer to the Health, Life Enrichment, Equity, and Community Policy Committee to establish basic criteria for a standard two-week permitting process. The city council reiterates its February 28, 2019 referral to identify and develop a temporary RV site to serve highly vulnerable populations, as well as regional nonprofit RV site, and to develop a program to allow private entities to host RVs on their property." Enforcement of RV parking. There are some people who did not get copies of that, and we apologize. We made 70, thinking that would be enough.
Would you like us to read the item, please? Council member Han has the floor.
I will, I just, I wanna make sure that folks are able to hear this, so...
Council member Han has the floor.
Okay. Enforcement of RV parking under the ordinance should be preceded by a period of initial outreach to RVs, including offers of support and assistance
Council member Han has the floor.
...to RV inhabitants, and notification of applicable parking ordinances, and a reasonable timeframe to comply.
Mr. Lee, please, you're disrupting the council proceedings. Council member Han has the floor. Council member Han has the floor. We will get to public comment very shortly, please. Council member Han has the floor.
Offers of support and assistance to RV inhabitants with notification of applicable parking ordinances and a reasonable timeframe to comply. Written housing homelessness and other applicable resources. And during the initial period of outreach, RV inhabitants should also be provided with outreach by a homeless services provider, including housing problem-solving assistance, possible funding for RV repair, referrals to additional housing and homeless resources, health, mental health, or addiction services, or other appropriate services. RVs and/or conditions adjacent to RVs creating health and safety concerns would be subject to immediate enforcement. City council took action at its March 12 meeting to allocate an initial amount of $50,000 from one-time state housing emergency aid program funds to provide outreach to RVs. Additional resources may be added as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget process. Refer to the city manager expedited creation of a special three-month permit program with possibility of renewal to be offered on a one-time basis to existing priority populations. The three-month priority permit should be operative no more than six months from adoption of this ordinance, and consider the following. Criteria for eligibility should be clearly articulated and fairly applied. The Alameda County Homeless Coordinated Entry System has standards already in place with criteria such as health status, disability, and self-care needs, age, and household size, including the presence of children. The permit should be available during an application window of one to two months and issued for up to three months, with an option to renew under limited/specified circumstances. Because the three-month permit process will be available for a limited time, the application and processing can be simplified. Staff should quickly identify, secure, and prepare temporary locations for priority permit holders to stay, including on public or private property, and establish appropriate sanitary facilities and other necessary protocols and/or facilities to support RVs with priority permits. If necessary, a lottery or a standardized system to prioritize applications may be established to allocate limited spaces in an equitable manner. No fee shall be required, as a three-month permit program will be offered on a one-time basis only to offer more intensive housing navigation and services to priority populations currently in Berkeley. And finally, refer to the Health, Life Enrichment, Equity, and Community Policy Committee to establish basic criteria for a permanent standard two-week permitting process. The standard two-week permit should consider the following. A limited number of permits to be issued by the city per month or other increment. Locations to be geographically dispersed among all council districts. A reasonable fee to cover city costs associated with the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the revised supplemental item that the council just... Madam City Manager, do we need to identify the funding source, or can we just deal with that in the budget process?
For fiscal year 19, is what I'm proposing you use revenues from? Yes, we need to identify.
So what is your recommendation? We will get to 21 if you stop interrupting the meeting.
My recommendation...
You're out of order. If you do not stop, we will have to clear the room. Please sit down. Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the recommendation...
You're out of order. We will clear the room if you do not stop interrupting. Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the recommendation for key one and advancing option D is to entertain recommendations for excess equity from transfer tax dollars in fiscal year 19, as well as excess equity. That is the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so I incorporate that in my motion. And so, that's my motion. Public comment on item 20A and B. Public comment. Do you want to not allow this guy to offer public comment? Sir, if you continue to interrupt, you will be asked to leave the room. Please, you're out of order. No, you're out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor. Sir, please, please speak. Please be respectful of the speaker. Please be respectful of the speaker.
My name is Robert Cohen. I'm a member of Friends of Strawberry Creek Park. I live on West Street, a couple blocks from here, and lived in the neighborhoods since 1993.
Sergeant of Arms? Sergeant of Arms? He has the floor. He has the floor. You're interrupting the meeting. This guy has the floor. Sit down. Sit down. You're not recognized. Sit down. We'll get to the items shortly.
Thank you, thank you.
Sergeant Arms, Sergeant Arms.
I am here to represent the Friends of Strawberry Creek Park. And we support...
We can set the clock for 20 minutes. I'm invoking the 20-minute rule. We can obviously extend debate by another 20 minutes. And I'd like to, I'm also invoking the chair's prerogative. Actually, here's what we're gonna do. Dionne, I'm gonna give each council member five minutes for initial comments, and then we could do another round. So if we can set the clock for five minutes for each council member. Okay, so the first in the queue is Councilor Davla.
I just also wanna state how upset I am about how this meeting has gone tonight. I just think it hasn't been handled well, and it's really upsetting, not only to me, but to the public. It's just, we need to do better. We need to do better. Items when we know that there's gonna be a zillion people, we need to not have it the freaking 11:30 on the... I mean, that's ridiculous. It's so ridiculous. And we're not getting paid for it, otherwise. Anyway. But, you know, this whole thing, we just passed on March 12, Everyone Home Plan to End Homelessness, which says, "By targeting our efforts, it is impossible to end homelessness in highly impacted and vulnerable communities in Alameda County. This requires focusing on racial disparities, structural inequities, inequalities that lead to homelessness, and commit to delivering equitable results. Increase investment, build stronger partnerships, align public policies." I mean, we just passed this on the consent calendar. It talks about prevent people from becoming homeless. Protect the dignity of people experiencing homelessness. Repeal or stop enforcing policies that criminalize homelessness. Develop a humane and consistent response to the needs of unsheltered people. Evaluate access to and outcomes of the housing crisis response system. We have like a whole, like 52 pages. I don't know if everybody read it, but we passed that on consent. And why this completely contradicts what we passed on consent? It's just like so disheartening. I mean, I understand businesses have, well, I'd like to see the actual numbers of their businesses losing money. I would like to see those financial statements. Because I'm not 100% convinced. But, I mean, and I would also like to invite all the businesses to sit down and have dinner, or have a community meeting with me and the RV dwellers. Because we need to, we need to unite. We need to stop all this BS and hating on each other, because that is not the world that we need to live in. It's just so disheartening, just so disheartening, I can't... And the fact that the public didn't have enough copies to read this item, I mean, come on now, we can do better. And the fact, I mean, I love our Berkeley PD, yes, I do. Some people think I don't. But this is an overkill of what, why, I mean, you're perpetuating fear by having so much police presence in a room when all, and when there's so many people that are here. I mean, we don't need this. We, I'm, to me, I'm offended by it, actually. Not that I don't love y'all, you look good in your suits, some of you that are in plain clothes and uniforms, but I think it's just too much. It's just too much. It just perpetuates the fear that everybody's talking about. But we need to do better. We need to realize that, I can't even find my notes right now. I have a whole list. This whole permit thing, oh my God, it's just, it's not cool. How many zones will be designated? How many permits per zone? How many permits overall in the city? How will the fees be set? At what level?
...are struggling to balance legitimate concerns and act in a humane manner on limited budgets. While I was sitting up here, I did just a little bit of research. Apple headquarters, Apple's new headquarters in Cupertino has 11,000 parking spaces. In 2018, if you Google "Apple profits 2018," the first thing that comes up is an article that says, "Cash pile hits $285.1 billion." For the record, I am asking for their help. I am making a public appeal to Apple, Google, and the top 1,000 grossing companies in the Bay Area. You have a huge role in creating this crisis. I know you didn't mean to, but you did. You are profiting from the workers you bring here wildly. Apple's 2018 revenues combined exceed the combined budgets of all government entities in the Bay Area. My ask, and this is a genuine ask, step up. My door is open. My phone number is 510-981-7150. Please call me the mayor, my colleagues. Let's talk about how you can help us, help our homeless and precariously housed. We need you to realize you are not global. You are local, and you have a responsibility to our communities. In addition, going from a very high level to a very fine grain, there are a number of categories that I had originally in the item at the bottom of the first page, where it says, "Criteria for eligibility should be clearly articulated and fairly applied." I was told that there was a question around the legality, and so I took them out, but I am putting them back in, and I want our city to fight for them. They are, and this is an amendment to my own proposal here, our own proposal. Families with children, people who work in Berkeley, students who attend schools in Berkeley, and people with a previous address in Berkeley for the last 10 years. I want those to be among our priority populations, who we issue three-month permits to with a possibility of renewal, and we work and we devote our resources to helping them maintain or find stable, permanent housing.
Okay, Councilmember Bartlet? Could we repeat the list before we go on?
Families with children, people with jobs in Berkeley, people who work in Berkeley, students at Cal, Berkeley City College, students enrolled in Berkeley, people with a previous address in Berkeley in the last 10 years. That would be added to the categories already there, not supplanting, but added.
So to really clarify, the populations that we're really gonna be focusing on providing long-term parking for them as part of the off-site location or the permit system. So, I'm gonna jump in before I go to, Councilor Bartlet, I move the adoption, the second reading of ordinance number 7643, along with the supplemental item that was submitted this evening by myself and councilmembers Han and Kesarwani, and the amendment that Councilor Han just read into the record.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Bartlet?
Thank you. You know, this is just a horrible experience, you know, but I would like to, I'd like to at least expand our coverage to include persons with disabilities and senior citizens.
I believe, Councilor Bartlet, that the item does reference that the criteria for the Homeless Coordinated Entry System would be what we would use, and those are priority populations under the Homeless Coordinated Entry System, if I'm not mistaken. So they're already, they would already be covered by that existing criteria. But we want to obviously add even further criteria to make sure that these other priority populations, vulnerable populations, will be served as well.
Okay, and then I would also, I would like for an exemption for these same protected categories until the permits are in place.
The effect of putting in place the permit system, or finding an off-site location for those particular individuals would be, would essentially be an exemption. So, what you're recommending, if we're able to locate a, locate a site in the city of Berkeley, or the Berkeley-in-fide school district, we're in conversation with the school district on the potential for parking for families with children in the district on school district land. School board will be discussing that tomorrow. Or we're able to identify a location, maybe with the city of Oakland, that we want to direct those priority populations to those locations, they would be exempt from the 2 to 5 regulation. So the effect of what we're doing through this supplemental item would exempt those populations, because they would either have an off-site location or would have a permit, and they would be exempt. So, I think your point is well taken, and that's why we wrote this proposal in the way that we did, to ensure that families with children, you know, people who work in this community, people that have long-term ties to this community, and other populations, high-needs populations, that they are not the subject of enforcement, that we're gonna work with them to find solutions. That's the practical effect of the supplemental item that we introduced. Councilor Bartlet has the floor.
And so, but as I said, I just wanna, just wanna clarify that I would like to see that until, until that's in place, I would like to see no enforcement on those categories of persons.
I'm just not sure legally if we can do that, council member. And, you know, the motion that we had passed on February 28th, as well as this item, says explicitly that outreach, sort of initial outreach and intensive outreach, and, and a three-month permit system, we're gonna get those pieces in place before we do broad enforcement of the ordinance. So I do believe that the, that the proposal, as presently written, accomplishes the goals that you are trying to accomplish. Anything else, council member? Councilmember Harrison?
I'm gonna ask you a question about that in a minute, because I'm a little confused on that point. I just wanna make a few preliminary comments, we're gonna be coming back around. Last year, we had a referral where we asked the city manager to develop a reasonable permit system and to look for sites for RV parking after people were evicted from the marina. And here we are nine months later, and we don't, we don't have that. So I am interested in making sure that whatever happens has specific dates and requirements. I do not want to pass something that says, "We're going to have a moratorium only until outreach is complete." We need timelines for that, and we also need timelines for when the permit system is gonna be put in place. I noticed you added six months as the timeline for the permit maximum, but that seems very lengthy to me. I also want to reflect on the fact that last year with the sidewalk ordinance, we had two goes at it, because we were trying to think really carefully about doing this. And we set some targets for ourselves. We set priorities for enforcement. We set size limits. We said at that time, you can't have more than three square feet of, or nine square feet, I guess it is, of materials. So, what I am interested in is this issue of concentration of RVs. I'm not interested in people not being able to sleep in vehicles, but I would like to see some restriction on the number of vehicles per block face, because that's equivalent to how much stuff people have. We have an unusual situation now where this impact is being felt in one particular area. I think this impact should be felt throughout, and along with my colleague JP, my constituent, I would offer the space in front of my house. I don't have a problem with that. I feel that what we've done here is by saying the three-month permits are connected to finding parking lots that we're saying, everybody else is gonna have to leave. So if we only find parking lots with 10 spaces, the other 190 people... So if we only find parking lots with 10 spaces, the other 190 people have to leave. And I guess I don't see a future, given what the Bloomberg came out today and said that the eviction crisis is the new subprime mortgage crisis. I don't see a situation where we're suddenly going to have people find homes. We need an interim push, just like we had pathways, and just like we have our limited enforcement on encampments for health and safety, I want to see a system that promotes looking for a site, or sites, and I really appreciate your efforts in that regard, Mr. Mayor, even working very hard to find sites, but we need an interim. What happens in the meantime? We never talk about what are we going to do in the meantime. And this gets me to my, my request that we have a moratorium on enforcement until the permit system is in place, with the exception you've included for health and safety problems. That was also equivalent to what we did with encampments. We said, you know, there's a health and safety problem, we're going to enforce on that right away. But I would like a moratorium on enforcement until we have this permit system in place. I also think the permit system should provide for these RVs to be distributed throughout the city, as I mentioned at the last meeting. I'd like to see them given out by zones in some way to avoid the over-concentration. I think that the permit of three months is too short, and really should be more appropriately six, six months. But I think overall what I want to say is, the difference in the point of view here is whether we can actually solve a problem of income inequality and poverty in our country. Can we solve it? Can we find solutions in any kind of timely way that won't require people to be evicted while we're looking for those solutions? And I don't think we can. This is a national problem, as you pointed out, Councilmember Han. This isn't caused by us, it's caused by economic development, in my view, that in some cases gone beyond what we should have. And I feel like we're now saying, but we're going to get a solution to this in three months or six months. We're not. We need this interim. We need to know what we're going to do in the meantime. So again, we had an item on, Councilmembers Davila and Robinson and myself, for next week, that talked about a permitting system. I feel like it is not right, that this has now been brought up as the alternative without looking at ours at the same time. I feel like that's not a fair process. We should be talking about all the concepts contained in both of these proposals, and so in that regard, I would like to move that we continue this discussion to April 2nd.
I'll second that.
If we can close the public hearing. I'm not sure, we don't want to do this. Okay, okay, if we, so I'm interested in us having a chance to look at these things side by side. Like everybody else, I got this 10 minutes before the meeting. I know you want a solution now, because people are hurting in West Berkeley. I get that. I really feel for Councilmember Kesarwani. She is suffering from the impact of this on her district, but we shouldn't, because of that, impact 200 RV dwellers. Not all of them live in that district, are living in that district. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify, Councilor Harrison, to your question, that as the item states that, this proposal that, you know, consistent with the motion that we'd adopted on February 28th, and consistent with this item, that there would be a phasing in of enforcement, that we would start with outreach and intensive outreach, that we would provide flexible funds, that we would work, and I believe it was the council took on, we said in the motion, we were going to take on the responsibility, working with staff, with the council, to identify locations, and we're already working on that, and I want to thank Councilor Kesarwani for reaching, and Han and myself for reaching out to the school district. So we're working on that, identifying locations, we can have safe haven parking for people, and then developing the three-month permit system, which can be extended for an additional three months for those vulnerable populations. While that's all happening, that's going to take time, there will only be enforcement in cases of health and safety.
Can I ask one clarifying thing, because I've heard two different things about this? Are you saying these three-month permits will only be in parking lots, or we will be giving out permits for people to stay on the street? I'm not sure.
On the term, councilmember.
When that's very concerning to me.
But, councilmember, what I'm saying to you is that there will, that there will be, only be enforcement in cases of health and safety. Until the permit system's in place.
It doesn't say that. It says until outreach is completed.
I amend my motion to clarify that.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that, that does help, and again, my, my concern is that we not look just at parking lots. People have to be here on the street.
Yes. So, Han, do you agree?
Yes, that was always intended.
That was the intent.
And if it wasn't clear, then of course, let's amend it to clarify.
I think the city manager wanted some clarity about, you know, when do we want to, if we pass this, when will we want to start enforcement? And our intent was to do, have these pieces in place first, before any enforcement happens. We don't want families with children, people that have long-term ties to community, students to be kicked out of our city. We want to find solutions for them. We need time to find those solutions, that's why we're talking about phasing this in over time. Councilmember Robinson, you recognize.
I want to know what the council thinks.
Public comment, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for the council to discuss.
Hi. Yeah. The second reading of an ordinance is usually pretty uneventful. I know, we had another one on the consent calendar today that I imagine went mostly unnoticed to people, but this is different. It's not often that the context of an issue changes that much between the first reading and the second reading, but it's clear that a lot has. There's been a lot of introspection, and I know a lot of our regional partners, our neighbors in neighboring cities, were disappointed in the action that this council took, and I think we know now that we moved too quickly, did too much too fast, and maybe it took us passing that first reading to realize the consequences of what we had passed. And so when the, when the supplemental came out yesterday, I, I was elated. I mean, this, this item is so much more than the council had been prepared to do before. It's a far more empathetic solution. You know, I'm not blind to the problem, I don't doubt that there are bad actors, and that's why I think that the health and safety exemption is important, and I'm deeply grateful, Rashi, Jesse, Sophie, for all the work and input that you sourced to bring this together. It really is a much better proposal on the table. That said, I think a lot of the reasons that I voted no on the first reading, A, still stand, and I'm uncomfortable about this approach. We know there are bad actors, we know there are problems, but this still feels too close to a blanket solution to me. It seems weird that we're in a situation where we would tell someone who's living on the streets that if they're compliant with our encampment policy, they would be allowed to keep doing that, but if they scrape enough together to live in a vehicle, and if they don't qualify for these long-term permits, then, then after they've managed to house themselves in a non-destructive way, are then non-compliant and liable to, or subject to potentially be evicted from the city. And there's, there are inconsistencies there. I just have a couple points, many of which have already been spoken to through the course of this conversation. With the permit period, yeah, I obviously still think three months is too short, I'm glad renewal is on the table, but I don't think it should be one time, I don't think we should have a, you know, someone who is priced out a year from now, we should be able to come to with the same options and resources as someone who's been priced out and living in their vehicle for years. You know, at the last meeting, I insisted that we should have a moratorium until we have these safe parking places in place. We had our, you know, our item to suggest that it should be a moratorium until that permit process is in place. It sounds like that's sort of what we're going toward, but I'd like to see something more rigid that outlines that. The item talks about six months potentially as the maximum timeframe until a permit process is in place. If we're committed to making sure that there's no enforcement except for health and safety situations until then, I think we should say outright, there will be no enforcement for six months after the ordinance takes effect, and presumably the permit process will exist before then. It's interesting to me that in the, the item, it specifically outlines that the two-week permit process, it has a bullet about locations being geographically dispersed among all council districts. I think that same bullets should exist for the three-month program. I sort of have a theory that if we did none of this except just the geographic dispersal, we would probably solve a lot of the problems that we're dealing with here. I was going to suggest we should expand the eligibility, if ties to eligibility for the three-month program, and had a little list laid out, it was more or less what Councilmember Han suggested, so thank you for that. And thinking often, of course, of the, you know, the 10% number, we hear about UC students who experience homelessness, and we also know a smaller number that isn't talked about as much, which is that 10% of those people who indicate that they've experienced homelessness indicate that during that time, they were living in their vehicle. And we don't have a good sense of how many people that is, but we know that it's a significant number, people whose lives are attached to Berkeley and who have turned to this in an act of desperation to stay here. And of course, our conversations to be had with the State Lands Commission, Jesse, you know this, of course, I hope we can pull on every string we can, to try to bring the Marina option back on the table, because it is so clear to us that that situation was just more tenable than what we're working with now.
Amen.
At the end of the day, I mean, this is, I just, I don't believe Berkeley should be in the business of evicting people whose lives are here, and I, I hope that this is, this is multiple steps away from doing that. So thank you, thank you for the work that's gone into this, but those are my hesitations. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Davila, then, Kesarwani.
Yeah, so, you know, we also haven't thought about all the people that have RVs that don't, that are going to be parked on the street, that, people that come to visit people in Berkeley, I mean, then I guess you could get, but, you know, I mean, a permit, but some people might be coming to stay for extended periods of time because they're dealing with a family member, a newborn grandchild, or things like that. And then there's also construction sites where, that could take a very long time. I mean, there's all kinds of other semantics, I guess I could use that word, that fall into play that aren't even listed, and I'm definitely down for a moratorium until all this stuff is solidified, because, you know, that's the right thing to do. And I mean, you know, we need to listen to, like, Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan, who begged us not to do this tonight, and, and the number of people in the room that have begged us not to do this tonight. I mean, here it is, almost midnight, and, you know, it's just not the right thing to do, you know? I think we can do better. We need, the city needs to identify locations, be in collaboration with the community groups, faith-based locations, churches, synagogues, mosques, schools, park, in public parking lots, work with the county to identify. I've been trying to deal with the county, not, not the county, but Caltrans, and East Bay Regional Parks, to get maps, not East Bay Regional Parks, excuse me, BART, because BART and Caltrans have property, and they might, but it's hard. So I would welcome if the mayor would take that time to try to get those maps, so that we can identify locations, because it's hard for me, I've been trying and it hasn't worked. Yeah, and then there should be something for, some kind of forgiveness if people get tickets, and they're low-income, and they can't pay. There has to be some kind of mechanism to deal with that. We still need to, like, find a pump out, and like I said previously, in this transfer station that we're, that's going to be built, designed, we should be taking that into consideration, because that could be a revenue source. All these people would love to just... Yeah, it's just, we need to come together to find solutions and not criminalize this community. And, you know, if we asked everybody in this room, who is from Berkeley, how many would say they were born and raised in Berkeley? Yeah, right, exactly, not that many. So I think it's a bunch of crap that they have to live in Berkeley for a period of time. I mean, if they're here, they want to be here, they are our Berkeley citizens. They pay taxes, they purchase, they go to businesses, they frequent, you know, I mean, it's not easy living in an RV, having your feet not elevated when you go to sleep at night, there's swelling, there's all kinds of physical, medical issues that occur because of this, you know? And, and it's not a choice, yeah, it is a choice that they made, but it's only because, I mean, the previous council barely put any affordable housing into place at all, you know? I mean, it's, it's really sad, and this is one of the reasons why we're in this situation now, because there wasn't any, there was always, you know, we're not forcing developers to include the house, the affordable housing that we need to house people that can't afford to live in Berkeley. If we had affordable housing, we wouldn't be having this issue. If we had been doing this for the last 12 years, we might not be having this issue. So, and that's happened throughout the country and all around the world, but, you know, that has to cease and desist. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kesarwani?
Yeah, I'd like to move to suspend debate and call the question.
Second the motion, it's a non-debatable motion. So we're voting on a motion now to suspend further debate and to proceed to a vote on the substitute main motion. Let's call the roll on calling the question.
Councilmember Kesarwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Davila?
Pass.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Yes.
Harrison?
No.
Han?
Yes.
Wengraff?
Yes.
Robinson?
Sure.
Droste?
Yes.
And Mayor Aragín?
Yes, so debate is suspended.
Councilmember Davila?
Guess my vote doesn't matter, but I'm going to say no.
Okay, motion passed.
Okay, motion passes, debate is suspended, we'll now proceed to a vote on the substitute motion by Councilmember Harrison to continue this item to our next meeting of April 2nd, correct?
Yeah, and to, to be considered in concert with the item we had originally submitted for tonight, which was a moratorium until the permit system is in place, and next week we have on our suggested permit system.
So it's the Harrison, the Harrison item.
Well, there's three offers.
Councilmember Harrison is recommending a yes vote, I'm recommending a no vote. It's called.
On the substitute motion, Councilmember Kesarwani?
No.
Davila?
I'm confused as to what's going to happen.
It's Harrison's motion to continue the item.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Yes.
It's a pass.
Harrison?
Yes.
Han?
No.
Wengraff?
No.
Robinson?
Abstain.
Abstain. Droste?
No.
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 Mayor Aragín?
No.
And Councilmember Bartlett?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Motion fails. So we'll now proceed to a vote on the main motion, which I had stated, which is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, the supplemental item, and the amendment by Councilmember Han on the criteria for the priority populations for the permit system. It's called a roll.
Wait, wait, I have a clarification.
And the clarification that there will be, that there will be enforcement in health and safety conditions, as stated in the item, while we are working to do the outreach and implement the permit system. So let's call the roll on the, on the main motion.
On the main motion, Councilmember Kesarwani?
Yes.
Davila?
No.
Bartlett?
We needed a little clarification.
Clarification? So, you're saying that enforcement will be suspended until there's, except for health and safety, until there's a permitting system in place?
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Bartlett?
Except health and safety.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Harrison?
Pass.
Han?
Yes.
Wengraff?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Droste?
Yes.
Mayor Aragín?
Yes.
And Councilmember Harrison?
No.
Motion passed.
Okay, motion carries. So that completes the business for the council this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Moved by Councilor Droste, seconded by Councilmember Han. Any objection? We are adjourned.
We all object over here.
Yeah.
Race trader class.[1783.51]